Good morning, and welcome to the Cuyahoga County Commission meeting this morning. We're going to start off with the invocation by Pastor James Baird, Covenant Church of Naples. Good morning, and thank you for being with us this morning.
My pleasure. Would you all bow your heads with me now as we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, that you are our Creator, our Ruler, our Sustainer. Lord, we thank you as well that you've sent your one and only Son, the Lord Jesus Christ, who's come to shed his blood and to rise again from the dead, that all of us may be forgiven of our sins and given the power to walk in newness of life if we'll but rest ourselves in your hands. We thank you also, Lord, for the gift of government, that it wouldn't be that people would live in disorder, but that they would live together in harmony, and that you have given us, people of authority, to help organize society to secure the public good. We pray today that you would bless them, that they might do their jobs well, and that piety, justice, and peace would be the common themes across our entire county. We pray as well today that they would see their duty to protect your church, the church of the Lord Jesus Christ, and we ask that you would gift them with the supernatural powers of justice, Lord, of the power to have strength to do what is right, for a love of the people who reside in this realm. And, Lord, we also pray that you would be glorified in all things, and that people would be built up into a mutual love for one another, that we might flourish. We ask all these things in the precious name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
You'll please remain standing. We're going to have the pledge this morning by Ms. Chickadee Clark, U.S. Air Force veteran, and she's going to say a few words after the pledge. Thank you, and good morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. I want to thank Lois Bowlen for asking me to be here today, quite an honor. In fact, anytime she asks me to do anything, I just say yes. It's just easier. A little bit about me, I served a little over 20 years in the Air Force. Wasn't what I set out to do, but it happened, and I'm grateful for it every single day. I also grew up in Illinois, so I'm very grateful that I now live in Florida, if you understand that comment. Most of my family and friends still live there, so I pray that my commander in chief will do great things for them and keep them coming along for me. I have a little nonprofit called Tag a Pet for a Vet, and we place rescue animals with veterans. We're a small nonprofit, but I like to say that we have a big heart. So if I can help anyone out, please contact us. We're doing a little military challenge right now. You'll see me on Facebook doing silly things, so please join us, and thank you for your time today.
Chickadee, thank you very much for your service and for being here this morning.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Patterson?
Commissioners, agenda changes for May 13, 2025. First, item 11B will be heard immediately following item 2C. This is a recommendation to accept the after-action report for general legislation during the 2025 Florida Legislative Session and provide an update on the extension of the regular session to consider the General Appropriations Act and related bills. This is being heard at Commissioner Saunders's request due to our lobbyist having a commitment, so we needed to get her on the agenda early. Next up, add item 11C. This is a recommendation to approve the release of a code enforcement lien with an accrued value of $301,800 for a reduced payment of $242,711.60 in the code enforcement action titled Board of County Commissioners versus Oaks Farms, Inc., relating to the property located at 4176 Mercantile Avenue, Collier County, Florida. This is brought to the agenda at staff's request. Add on item K-16K-18. This is a recommendation to authorize the county attorney to make a settlement offer of $1,000 as a nuisance threshold for litigation strategy purposes in the matter styled Nicholas Spence versus Collier County Board of County Commissioners, case number 24-CA-409, pending in the Circuit Court of Collier County, Florida. This is brought to the agenda at staff's request. Finally, continue item 16K-7 to the June 10, 2025 BCC meeting. This is a recommendation to provide direction to advertise an ordinance establishing the Clambay Advisory Committee to provide recommendations to the board on matters affecting the entire Clambay estuary system. This item is being moved at Commissioner Hall's request. Just a note, we do have court reporter breaks scheduled for 10:30 and 2:50 if needed. With that, county attorney?
No issues, thank you.
Very good. Commissioners, any changes or disclosures, ex parte, on the summary or consent agenda?
Mr. Colwell?
I have no changes, and I have no ex parte on any of the consent or summary.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chair. I have no ex parte. I have an issue with the continuance of 16K-7. I know Commissioner Hall's not here today, so it's not really fair for me to pick on him. But it was shared with me that the establishment, his wish to push this a month was to allow the parties to communicate. That issue with Clambay has been going on since time immemorial, and I see no reason to push the establishment of the committee. The parties can still communicate and still go forward. I'd rather not push this. I'd rather establish, get the process out, start taking applications, engage the community, and get the members on there so we can have these conversations.
I will consider that to be a motion?
If that's what's required, sir, yes, I'd like to make that a motion.
Right now, it's on the change list to be continued.
It's just named as continued, and I didn't get a choice on that.
Let's see what the will of the board is on that particular item.
Okay.
I'm down. Commissioner LaCastro, in terms of 16K-7, right now, it's scheduled to be continued. There's a motion to not continue that. Do you support that, or what's your feeling on that?
I agree with what Commissioner McDaniel said without question, but one of the other things that I feel serving in the seat is that it's not for me to question another commissioner when they want to pull something off of the agenda. So with me not being able to converse with Commissioner Hall right now and ask him his rationale, if he felt the need to pull it off, I would hope that if I pulled something off, he would honor that as well. So it's not that I don't support what he said, but obviously Commissioner Hall pulled this off well before this motion was made, and I honor that for whatever reason he had.
Mr. Colwell?
I kind of feel on the same lines. I do agree with Commissioner McDaniel. You know, I thought this was a done deal, and we were moving forward. I was looking forward to it, and I don't have the opportunity to ask my fellow commissioner here today what the reasoning behind it. You know, maybe there's some light I didn't see or something I didn't, you know, I'm not aware of, because we don't have the opportunity to communicate, so.
And I tend to agree as well. A couple more weeks won't hurt for this, so. Any other changes, Commissioner McDaniel?
No, no further changes. I'll withdraw the motion.
Commissioner LaCastro?
I have no changes, no ex parte.
Okay, I have no changes and no ex parte as well. So we need a motion to approve the regular consent and summary agenda as amended.
So move.
We have a motion, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passed unanimously.
Commissioners, that brings us to item two, Agenda and Minutes. We do have three sets of minutes here. Item 2A is the March 25, 2025 BCC minutes. Item 2B is the April 8, 2025 BCC minutes, and item 2C is the April 22, 2025 BCC minutes, if you'd like to take them all together or separately at your pleasure.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move for approval altogether.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve all three sets of minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, that passed unanimously. Ms. Patterson, before we move on to the legislative update, which we need to do because of some timing up in Tallahassee, there's a group of folks here that have questions concerning the FC Naples project that has been continued, and I've asked the county attorney to just make a quick explanation as to why we can't entertain questions or comments at this hearing this morning.
The reason we can't entertain questions is because the petitioner has the right to cross-examine, and since petitioner's not here, that right would be lost.
We have a statutory requirement to have a public hearing at which the five of us make a decision based on what we hear at that hearing, and so we cannot open up this hearing this morning. If we did that, quite frankly, that would be an avenue for appeal if the petitioner doesn't get what the petitioner is seeking. So we're going to move on, but I just wanted you to hear from the county attorney that we cannot entertain questions this morning concerning that project or any project that's being continued. Ms. Patterson?
Yes, sir, that does bring us to our time-certain item. This is item 11B, is a recommendation to accept the after-action report for general legislation during the 2025 Florida Legislative Session and provide an update on the extension of the regular session to consider the General Appropriations Act and regular, or in related bills. And with that, Ms. Bridget Corcoran, Legislative Affairs Coordinator, is here to begin the presentation.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for the consideration this morning. As we have said, our lobbyist has a meeting with the governor's office this morning that needed to bump the time for when she would be available. So we do have her on the line to provide an update. We try to give you a timely update, since this is a unique situation this year with a extension of session. We just thought that it was important to give you the most recent information that we have. Tom, do we have Lisa ready to go?
Before we get into that, Commissioner Hall is not going to be on the line.
Yes, sir.
He has an excused absence, so I just want the record to reflect that he has an excused absence. Does anybody object to that?
Not at all.
He's traveling on some county issues, and his absence is excused. Thank you. I should have said that at the beginning, and I apologize, but go ahead.
Thank you. Is Lisa keyed up, or? Lisa? Were you having a little technical, or is she?
Good morning, can you hear me?
There we go. Good morning, Lisa.
Yes, good morning, we can hear you.
Good morning, Chair Saunders and Commissioners.
Lisa Hurley with FBM Partners up in Tallahassee. Thank you for having me this morning. I'm sorry I can't be there in person, and I appreciate very much your taking this item at the front of your agenda today. As I'm sure everyone is well aware, we are in a circumstance where the House and the Senate have not been able to reach a deal on the budget yet, which has caused us to extend sessions, and so that's the posture that we're in right now. In fact, the House is actually in Tallahassee and will meet today to propose extending the session even further. So let me kind of lay the table for you on how we ended up where we are, and it really does come down to fundamentally, we've got three leaders. We've got Ben Albright, the President of the Senate. We've got Danny Perez, the Speaker of the House, and we have Governor DeSantis, and all of the same party, and all really wanting fundamentally to do the same thing for Floridians, which is to deliver some meaningful tax cuts, some tax relief. But they all three have very different ideas on how to accomplish that. And so Governor DeSantis laid out a very, very slim budget recommendation for the House and the Senate to consider $2 billion lower than this last fiscal year's budget, and as part of that budget, he proposed some property tax relief in the form of rebates to homestead property owners. And that would have been a one-time relief for homestead property owners. The fact of the matter is, Adlorum Taxation is a local government authority that's in the Constitution, so the legislature has very limited authority on what they can do. They really, it is, they can come up with ideas for property tax reductions or changes, but ultimately, that has to be put on the ballot and go to the voters to decide. So that was the governor's plan. The Speaker of the House saw it very differently. His idea is a reduction in sales tax, and it would be a permanent reduction in sales tax. It would have equaled about the same amount of reduction in the budget as the governor's, so we're looking at about four and a half, $5 billion. And that's the House's budget that they put out. And then we've got the Senate, who has really been trying to kind of thread the needle and find a balance between what the governor would like to achieve and what the House Speaker would like to achieve, and their plan came out with a sales tax reduction on clothing and shoes less than $75. That would have been a permanent sales tax reduction, but at a much lower reduction to the state budget. And then as far as property taxes, the Senate is proposing to have a study over the summer to look at property taxes and then come back with a report. The fact of the matter is, if you're going to revamp property taxes, you have to replace it with something, and so that's what they'll be looking at. And so the end of the regular session was on May 2. We felt certain that we were going to go into an extended session, because the House and the Senate were $4.5 billion apart. Late on Friday night, May 2, about 10 o'clock, the House and the Senate announced that they had reached an agreement on a framework for the budget, and how the budget is built in Tallahassee is, the House and the Senate, they agree on the big budget allocations for each of the program silos, so think environment, think transportation, think education. They agree on the big numbers that they're going to fund those programs, and then from there, you build into those, you back into those numbers, and you negotiate your differences in those program silos. So they announced Friday night that they had reached that agreement, and they were planning to begin budget conference in the next two weeks. So that night, they extended the session, excuse me, until June 6. Since that time, they, there has been some reconsideration on that agreement, and that was partly fueled by the governor saying, disagreeing with the approach on the sales tax reduction, and wanting more of property tax relief. And so with that, and indicating that if there was sales tax reduction, which in his eyes, you know, would be more tax relief for tourists and foreigners coming into the state that pay the same sales tax rate as citizens of Florida, that that's not something the governor could support, and that he would likely veto a measure. So that has caused the House and the Senate to rethink that, the tax proposal that they had agreed to, and so it is really, I will say, it stalled budget negotiations. I think at this point, because particularly in the House, they're so firmly entrenched onto sales tax reduction strategy, that it's just going to take some time to kind of right the ship and figure out where they can land. And so as I've been sitting here talking to you today, there is nothing calendared as far as budget conference committees yet. What we have is the House here today. They're going to go into session at 1 o'clock this afternoon to vote to even further extend the session until June 30. They're going to vote that out today, but the Senate has to agree to that, and so far, the Senate has not given any indication that they're ready to extend any further. They're working really hard to try to put together an offer and proposals for the House, such that they're still trying to get this resolved by June 6. And so that's kind of what we've got going on up here. There's more questions than answers at this point. Like I said, there's nothing else scheduled in either House or the Senate on the budget. I will say, but for, the House, in the very last week of session, convened a special select committee on property tax, and they are, they have the mission throughout the summer, to work throughout the summer, to look into property taxes and come forward with proposals to be considered next legislative session for measures that would be put on the ballot for the voters to decide. That property tax committee, of which Collier delegation member, Representative Ben Roach is a part of, she's a member of, they will meet today at 2 o'clock, but that work is going to continue through the summer. And I will tell you that as part of those efforts, there's been outreach to the county on numerous occasions throughout the session from the governor's office, and now the House on property taxes, and the county has been very proactive and responsive to responding to those requests, probably one of the first counties to do that, so great job there. But you can expect throughout the summer, probably, to have more requests from the governor's office and in the House Committee. So I'm going to pause there. So what that means is, obviously, the county's appropriations projects requests, priority items up here, that is all part of the budget negotiation and the process, and so those items are all still outstanding, not only specific appropriation requests, but also our veterans' nursing home proviso that we need in the budget as well. So I'm going to pause there and open it up for questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hurley, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of all of us here in Cuyahoga County. Let me see if there are any questions from the commission. Seeing none, let me just make a general comment to our staff. There will be substantial tax relief in this year's budget. It will affect our budgets, and so hopefully, our staff is keeping an eye on that. One of the things Tallahassee is pretty famous for is boasting about large tax cuts, when a lot of those tax cuts really are cuts to local government, so we need to keep an eye on that. Ms. Hurley, thank you very much for your assistance and your representation. We'll look forward to talking to you sometime in June or July after things settle down.
Thank you so much.
What I'd like to do, thank you. Ms. Corcoran, I think what I'd like to do, we have a lot of people here with proclamations. Let's go through the proclamations, and we'll come back to the rest of your report. Just for the audience, we needed to have Ms. Hurley on the phone, because she's got a meeting with the governor at 10 o'clock, and we needed to make sure she was available for that, so that's why we moved that ahead. Let's move on to the proclamations and go through all that.
Yes, sir. This moves us to item four, Proclamations. Item 4A is a proclamation designating May 4 through 10, 2025, as National Correction Officers Week to be accepted by Sheriff Kevin Rambosk, Colonel Jim Bloom, Director Katina Boza, Corrections Officers, and Naples Jail Center staff. Congratulations.
[applause]
We got this offer on the brain. But I think they know what you meant.
Oh, yes.
Good morning.
We all go that way.
Bottom row, sorry, bottom row.
I think we are.
Three, two, one. Five, two, three.
Very good.
I'm going to tell you what that is. One way or the other.
Morning, everyone. On behalf of the men and women of our Corrections Department, I would like to thank you for recognizing them. They do a fabulous job. I get a chance to give you an update each year, and I will again at our budget hearing process. But I think I'd like to not only recognize them, but remind the public that, you know, they're not only responsible for the care, custody, and control of those in our facility, but it is a dangerous job. According to the National Law Enforcement Memorial Foundation, over history, 133 corrections officers have given their lives in the service of their communities to keep the rest of us safe. So I think that's a really important thing to remember. The other thing is that they take the time when they are in our facility, as this state and this community sees fit for the type of violation that they have committed, but they use that time so that they can better transition these individuals back into the community and reduce reoffending in this community, and they have an integral part of keeping the crime rate as low as it is, and I will get into that later in June. But again, we are at our lowest crime rate in recorded history, so thank you to all of those staff members.
Thank you, and thank you to all of your men and women in law enforcement and corrections.
Item 4B is a proclamation designating May 2025 as National Drug Court Month to be accepted by Judge Denise Martin, Presiding Judge, Collier County Drug Court. Congratulations.
Judge, thanks for your deal.
You turned out okay. You turned out all right. You too, you guys turned out all right. You're good guys. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Two rows.
One, two, three, four.
Good job.
Yes, please.
As the judge is getting ready to make a few comments, I would like to say that Cuyahoga County is blessed to have a really effective drug court. Judge Martin does a phenomenal job, probably one of the best in the country, if not the best, and we can say that with all sincerity, so thank you for all of that.
We'll take that. Mr. Chair, thank you so much, and thank you all for having us. We have served as a national model, and we're extremely proud of that. So thank you for this honor. It's always such a privilege to come into this space with our team members, alumni, and our clients. Your public support of treatment, accountability, and recovery matters. With me today are our neighbors, our sons and daughters, our brothers and sisters, fathers and mothers, employees, and also employers. What they've stepped on to take on with us, stepped up to take on with us, takes tremendous courage. Facing down your demons, turning your life around, is way harder than just doing your time. And the substances on our streets today and in our convenience stores are exponentially more powerful than just a decade ago. So we're grateful to all of our partners, David Lawrence Center, State Attorney's Office, Office of the Public Defender, Collier County Sheriff's Office, and that jail that you just honored, Department of Corrections, St. Matthew's House, and others, and all of you for your leadership and your support. This is a community-wide challenge. It requires a community-wide response. Recovery is real, and thank you.
Judge Martin? A quick question. How many, how long have you had the drug court? How long have you been involved with that?
I have had it for over 14 years.
And during that 14 years, how many success stories have you had? Just round number.
The court has existed since 99, and some of you joined us last fall for our 25th anniversary. We're upwards of 400 graduates, but I'm really pleased to note that a lot of the folks that don't actually graduate with us go on to stay clean, stay out of trouble, and have productive lives, and so success is a tough thing to measure with humans, but the men and women that we've served go on to do very, very well, and the vast majority take the opportunity when it's given to them.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you do for the community, and congratulations to all the graduates.
Item 4C is a proclamation designating May 18 through May 24, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Collier County, to be accepted by our EMS administrative staff. Congratulations.
[applause]
Item 4C is a proclamation designating May 18 through May 24, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Collier County, to be accepted by our EMS administrative staff. Congratulations.
[applause] honored, Department of Corrections, St. Matthew's House, and others, and all of you for your leadership and your support. This is a community-wide challenge. It requires a community-wide response. Recovery is real, and thank you.
Judge Martin?
(applause)
A quick question. How many, how long have you had the drug court? How long have you been involved with that?
I have had it for over 14 years.
And during that 14 years, how many success stories have you had? Just round number.
The court has existed since 99, and some of you joined us last fall for our 25th anniversary. We're upwards of 400 graduates, but I'm really pleased to note that a lot of the folks that don't actually graduate with us go on to stay clean, stay out of trouble, and have productive lives, and so, success is a tough thing to measure with humans, but the men and women that we've served go on to do very, very well, and the vast majority take the opportunity when it's given to them.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you do for the community, and congratulations to all the graduates.
(applause)
Item four C is a proclamation designating May 18th through May 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Collier County to be accepted by our EMS administrative staff. Congratulations.
Good morning.
These guys in front will just file through and go back, you can hit the end.
(inaudible)
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 Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you for this proclamation. I want to thank the Commissioners as well as the County Manager and the Deputy County Manager for their support to make EMS a successful team. May 18th through the 24th, 2025, is National EMS Week. In 1974, President Ford authorized EMS Week to celebrate EMS practitioners for the important work they do in our nation. Providing emergency medical care isn't an easy job, but the day after day, EMT and paramedics go to work with one goal in mind, to protect the safety and health of those in distress. This group is a fraction of the dedicated professionals that truly exceed the expectations of their patients and the community each and every day by serving on the front lines. I want to thank all of them. From the team that worked from behind the scenes, the boots in the field, I am very proud of them and proud to work for this amazing agency. Thank you again for recognizing Collier County EMS.
Thank you.
(applause)
Item four D is a proclamation recognizing Dr. Robert B. Tober for his unparalleled contributions to the field of emergency medical services and his lasting impact on the health and safety of our community. This is being accepted on his behalf by EMS Chief Bruce Gastineau and EMS Division Chief Matthew Vila. Congratulations.
(applause)
Hello, Bruce again.
Hello.
Hello again.
(inaudible)
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 Leaving with a lot of hardware today.
Yeah, yeah.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(applause)
Dr. Tober was unable to be here today to accept this proclamation, so it's with great honor and humility that we accept this proclamation on his behalf. For more than 40 years, Dr. Tober has served as the Medical Director of Collier County EMS, and has shaped not only the careers of countless professionals, but the very fabric of emergency medical care in Collier County. Dr. Tober's vision transformed Collier County EMS into a national model of excellence. He introduced innovations long before they became industry standards, like the pit crew concept for cardiac arrest, which helped raise the Collier cardiac arrest survival rates to more than twice the national average. Additionally, Dr. Tober's Code Save a Heart and Code Save a Brave programs have saved and improved the quality of life for countless heart attack and stroke victims. Dr. Tober's influence extends far beyond Collier County. He was honored with the Florida Medical Association Roy M. Baker Award, the Collier County Medical Society Lifetime Achievement Award, and Florida Department of Health EMS Medical Director of the Year. These are just a few of the awards he has received. Today, we honor his retirement. We carry forward his legacy. His fingerprints are on every protocol written, every career shaped, every life saved. We celebrate Dr. Tober by bestowing him with the honorary position of Emeritus Medical Director for Collier County. Commissioners, on behalf of Dr. Tober, thank you for this recognition. Dr. Tober, on behalf of Collier County EMS and all the lives you saved, thank you.
(applause)
This commission, and prior commissions, but this commission in particular, has been really committed to public health and public safety. When you pick up the phone, you have an emergency, you dial 911, you need an ambulance, you want trained professionals to arrive. Dr. Tober took Collier County from really having barely any EMS infrastructure and turned it into one of the models for the country, and so I want to personally thank Dr. Tober for what he has done for all of us for many, many years, and I'm glad we were able to recognize him on his retirement. Thank you for accepting that proclamation.
Here, here.
Item four E is a proclamation designating May 17th through 23rd, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week to be accepted by Richard Hurd, Flotilla Staff Officer, Public Affairs. Congratulations.
(applause)
Thanks for all you guys do.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for all you guys do. Appreciate it.
(inaudible)
If you'd like to spend a few minutes telling us a little bit what you do, you're welcome to do so. Yes, sir.
So, on behalf of the three flotillas in Collier County, we are all volunteer operation. We support boater safety and education throughout the county. There are over a million registered vessels in the state of Florida, by far the biggest state in the Union, and we work tirelessly with thousands of hours of education for boater safety, vessel exams, partner visitations. We work with partners throughout Collier County in police, fire, EMS, FWC, to keep boaters safe on the water. So, thank you, Commissioners, for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
Item four F is a proclamation designating May 2025 as Drowning Prevention Month in Collier County to be accepted by Daniel White, Advisory Board Chair, NCH Safe and Healthy Children's Coalition of Collier County. Congratulations.
(applause)
Thanks for all you do, sir. Yeah, thank you, sir. Thanks for all you guys do. Good morning. Thanks for all you guys do. Thanks for all you do.
(inaudible)
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 And once again, on behalf of the NCH Safe and Healthy Children's Coalition, we thank you, the Board of County Commissioners, for once again proclaiming the month of May to be drowning prevention month. We value our partnership through not only this month, but the entire year to highlight the importance of water and swim safety awareness throughout Collier County. Drowning can happen to anyone, even the most attentive and caring parents. Unfortunately, Collier County has seen a rise in non-fatal drownings, many of which have come through the NCH Pediatric ER, which is the only pediatric emergency room in the county. So far this year, they have treated nine non-fatal drowning cases, most of which occurred during spring break. We have also had several tragic incidents, including this March in Collier County where a 16-year-old boy drowned in a pond, according to local media reports. Even more alarming, in 2024, the Florida Department of Children and Families reported 105 child drownings statewide. It's down to stick 105, it's a huge number. This is the highest number since statewide data collection began in 2012. As of today, 35 children have drowned in the state of Florida in 2025, roughly the same number as last year. This is why the work of the NCH Safe and Healthy Children's Coalition and its drowning prevention initiatives are so crucial. We must continue working together to promote and implement layers of protection, which is a proven strategy to prevent drowning that includes active adult supervision, using barriers like pool fences, door alarms, obviously swim lessons, a key barrier, and knowing how to respond with basic water rescue skills and CPR, thanks to people like these folks. Since March of 2012, more than 12,000 Collier County children have participated in over 97,000 water safety lessons through the Swim Central Program with continued support from the Naples Children and Education Foundation. It's a big number, 97,000 swim lessons. The Collier County Parks and Recreation Team are valued partners for the Swim Central Program, teaching water safety lessons under the leadership of James Hanrahan and Randy Swinderman, with guidance of each of their facility programs leaders, Bryce Hammer, Al Akoye, Samantha Hernandez, Brian Reyes, Kelly Hanimer, and support from their respective teams. Recently, education was provided to preschool students from the Salvation Army, Golden Gate Community Center, and Big Corkscrew Island Regional Park. In addition, the Golden Gate Aquatic Facility is hosting a Water Safety Day on March, Wednesday, May 21st, to educate the community through fun and informative activities on ways to be safe in and around the water. Our mascot, Stewie Dedoc, continues education throughout the community with support from the Florida Drowning Prevention Committee, and we have expanded the Life Jacket Loner Program in Collier County from 15 to 17 this year, and it supports our mission, is kids don't float, life jackets do. If you've been to the beaches, you've probably come across these life jackets, and each one generally has 20 life jackets available for the public to use. These stands are maintained in partnership with the Collier County Parks and Recreation and monitored by the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Volunteers from Naples, Wiggins Pass, of course, and Marco Island. All this work is possible with the support and partnership of those previously mentioned and the other 70-plus government, nonprofit agencies, and businesses that make up the NCH Safe and Healthy Coalition's, including some that are with us today. We've got the Collier County Public Schools with us today, Healthy Start of Southwest Florida, we've got NCH, and of course, the Coast Guard Auxiliary. Throughout this month of May, organizations that are part of the Coalition are hosting events and activities across Collier County. You can find a calendar at watersparkcollier.org and through the Coalition's social media channels. We thank you for your time and continued support.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
(applause)
Item four G is a proclamation designating May 2025 as National Foster Care Month to be accepted by Rick Jacobs, Executive Director for Kids Southwest Florida. Congratulations.
(applause)
Congratulations. Thanks, Rick.
(applause)
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 Thank you, Commissioners, on behalf of Four Kids of Southwest Florida, a foster care organization here, serving the five-county region of Circuit 20. We are grateful for the recognition. President Reagan is the one who actually named May back in 1988 as Foster Care Awareness Month, and so, we're grateful that our nation recognizes it, but an event like this, an opportunity to be before you, helps to bring some awareness and some light even into our own communities, because last year, over 500 children in Southwest Florida were removed from their homes and placed into foster care, and so, we're doing all we can to help those kids, help provide loving homes for them. We do three things in our organization. We call it Hope Homes and Healing, so that hope component is actually helping to keep kids and keep families together. It's our prevention initiative. In the first quarter of this year, we served 112 families, keeping them together, so it helps save the state a lot of money, but more importantly, helps keep those families bonded and help them be resourced and have the tools that they need to care for their kids well. We also have 24 homes across the region. We're getting ready to license three more in Collier County, more throughout the region, but three more right now in process, so we're excited about those families that are providing loving homes for kids, and then also, something that's pretty unique to our organization is we provide at no cost to the children that are in care in those families, trauma-informed care. So, we have licensed mental health therapists that focus on children, and so, we've done about 400 hours in the first quarter, so do the math, it's going to be over 1,000 hours that we do this calendar year, helping provide trauma-informed care for kids, again, at no cost to them, helps them experience some healing while they're in these foster homes, and also, those biological families when they get reunited. So, we're excited about the work we get to do. Thank you for the recognition this morning, and we just look forward to all this year we'll bring as we get to serve more children and families in crisis.
(applause)
Item four H is a proclamation designating May 2025 as National Bike Month to be accepted by Michelle Avola Brown, Executive Director, Naples Pathways Coalition. Congratulations.
(applause)
Did you ride your bike here this morning?
(laughing)
You drove a big giant SUV, right? Is that what you said?
A hybrid, for the record, a hybrid.
There's always one.
(applause)
(applause)
Naples Pathways Coalition has been working in this community for 20 years now, working to make it safer for people to bike and to walk. Those who want to bike and walk, those who need to bike or walk to get where they're going, and we have had the honor and the pleasure with working with Collier County Transportation, with the Collier MPO. Board members and members of Naples Pathways are part of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We've been instrumental in advocating for hundreds and hundreds miles of sidewalks and bike lanes and multi-use pathways that have been added to this community, that have helped ensure safety for people who use their body power instead of a hybrid or a big vehicle to get where they're going. I invited you at the Collier MPO meeting, but I invite all of the community to come out on May 21st. We're having our 23rd Annual Ride of Silence. That event is to honor and remember cyclists who have been killed while biking. Florida has the dubious distinction of always being in the top three for the most bicycle and pedestrian fatalities. I believe this year, we're in the top spot again.[1703.27] So, we have a lot of work to still do. There's a lot that our community can do, so I invite all of you to be part of this. There's active ways that you can help others be safe, and there's whether you're driving, whether you're biking, or you're walking. So, thank you very much, have a great day.
Michelle, I just wanted to say something. First, thank you for all that you do. You're at so many different meetings representing, you know, not only the pathways, efforts that you're honchoing, but so many other things. The five of us are really committed to e-bike and e-scooter safety, and we just took a stab at it with the recent ordinance. We know that, you know, one ordinance isn't going to cover and fix everything. But as I think maybe you and I conversed possibly in an email, and I know I'm speaking on behalf of all five of us, you're really at the nucleus of folks that are obviously riding bikes and out there. We really value your input. We're not naive enough to think that, you know, every single thing can be covered in an ordinance. But if you think we did miss something, or you're hearing feedback, or most importantly, if you can help us advertise what the new rules and regulations are, we really need help, you know, doing that. So, I see a lot of stuff on social media, and that only goes so far. But, you know, you are at the top of the pyramid of everybody who's, who are the bikers, and we could continue to use your support for that. Because the e-vehicle safety is something that we really want to get our arms around for the entire community and really get it right.
And I thank you so much for that and for your intentionality of addressing the safety issues that have just sprung up with the huge increase in e-bicycle riding. I'd be happy to have a lot more discussions about it. As I have shared, education really is going to be more of the key than ordinance. So, happy to share what the ordinance is. We've been doing our part with that, but would love to work with you on education as well.
Okay, great, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Caldwell, you want to add anything? I know this was sort of your initiative.
Yeah, no, I do appreciate everything you bring to the table. You know, at the MPO meetings especially, you're always there when, you know, there's hardly anybody attending those meetings, but you're always there. You're like a trooper. I'd just like to say, just real quick, I actually had a very good meeting with the sheriff and all his command staff yesterday. And they're already putting together a great, great educational packet that's going to be going out through the schools, school resource officers. So, yeah, there's going to be about a six-week to ten-week just continuous education on his part, you know, on getting a lot of these things out and then reevaluating everything we did. And if we need to adjust things, that's going to be the time to see how it responds or how they respond to the educational side of it. So, we're definitely, you know, we're moving in that direction. We're not just throwing an ordinance out there and saying, "All right, fend for yourself." This is surely not. We never want to have to enforce an ordinance on somebody. You want somebody to be educated enough to make the right decision on their own. So, that's what we're looking to see over this grace period while the sheriff's out there with his troops and everybody else, and anything we can do here at the board. And your organization would be great.
We would love to see the education packet. We are always extending ourselves as a resource. We've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of supporters and members in this community who want to be the hands and feet to help get out that messaging. So, please use us. I would love to see what that education packet is.
For sure, will do.
Thanks.
We only have seven more proclamations, so be patient.
Item four I is proclamation designating May, two thousand twenty-five, as Mental Health Awareness Month in Collier County, to be accepted by Lindsay Touche, Treasurer for Collier Coalition for Healthy Minds and Vice President of Community Engagement with the Collier Community Foundation. Congratulations.
Well, good morning. We'll be brief. We know you've had a lot of proclamations, still have a few to go.
Actually, you're the...
Oh, we are the last, oh, okay, okay. I just...
Unless, is there anyone out there that would like a proclamation? Anybody?
Thank you so much for the recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month. That this started in nineteen forty-nine, if you can imagine that. And when you stop and think about the mental health service system in our country back in nineteen forty-nine and the shadows that people were literally living under at that point in time, we've come a long way in our country in recognizing the importance of mental health. And I say all the time, and I know many of my colleagues that I'm blessed to work with and partner with, say that there's no health without mental health. We are one body, one mind, and we're interconnected in that way. So, you recognizing here today Mental Health Awareness Month also helps get us out of the shadows. Helps make sure that we're raising awareness and that we're decreasing stigma. There should be no guilt or shame for somebody to come to receive mental health care, just like there shouldn't be any guilt or shame going to get any other organ in your body checkup, right? The organ, the lung, the lung, the heart, we don't think about that. But when it's the brain, for some reason, we think about those things differently. And we're doing better in that regard. Unfortunately, the sad thing is with population growth and with prevalence growth around mental health and mental illness issues, that we're still... Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for kids and young adults in our country. So, we still have a major battle and a major war in front of us. And we thank you so much for being part of that solution. It does take a whole village for us to address these issues, to make sure that not only are we raising awareness, but that we've got the resources and the access to care for those that are struggling, whether it's a child, it's a family, it's an adult. And we thank you for your partnership. And I want to also formally thank the Collier Coalition for Healthy Minds. It's a group of about twenty different organizations that have come together and worked with the county commission. Five years ago, we passed unanimously with your support the first-ever Mental Health Strategic Plan for Collier County. We are, we've been working diligently, advancing that plan for the last five years and trying to tackle all those priorities as best we can. And we're excited to come before you in the next month or so to talk a little bit about the update on that plan and talk about how we want to extend that plan five more years with your support that we're hopeful for. So, thank you for being great partners. Thank you for your assistance, and thank you for what you're doing, because what you're doing is literally saving and changing lives each and every day. God bless you.
Ms. Patterson, why don't we finish up the legislative update, and then we'll get into the public comment on items not on the agenda.
Yes, sir, if we could get a motion to accept the proclamations.
Go move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamations. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, it passed unanimously. Ms. Corcoran, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing Lisa to speak this morning. I just thought it was important to give an update as to what's going on with the budget, because there's just a lot of uncertainty at this point, and they just can't seem to reach a consensus. So, I'll go through things quickly. It's still a very fluid situation with most of the legislation. It still needs to go to the governor for approval. At this point, because they are in special session, the governor has seven days to approve instead of the typical fifteen. So, give you some statistics of the bills that were introduced, passed. I'm not going to get into the details of that. These are the bills that are still being considered. The Rural Communities SB one-ten, that is President Albritton's legislation that he... This is his project this year that he wanted to see. And typically with the Senate President, that's one of the first bills that are passed, and it's still under consideration. So, it's been an interesting year. What we still have in play for the appropriations is the Courthouse Annex, the Pump Station Hardening, and Emergency Operations Technology Upgrade. These are the ones that are in the Senate budget. The Courthouse Annex was included in the House budget, but that was a previous version. So, at this point, you know, with my discussions with Lisa, with Senator Pasodomo, these are the three that are still in play. And then I'm going to go through these quickly. These two items were sponsored by Rep. Mello. They were approved. So, the Greater Naples Fire Rescue District, that's something that they... It's going to go to referendum for the commissioners to be elected at large, and that will begin November, two thousand twenty-eight, general election. The Corkscrew Grove Stewardship District, that has been approved. That's a new housing project that's being developed. One of the items that was discussed a lot in session is geoengineering and weather modification activities. So, that's something that will be monitored now, that they do have a reporting for the chemtrails. So, EPA will be monitoring, you know, any, you can report it. There's going to have a reporting mechanism that they're now working on. Also, the governor did approve HB five-seventy-five, which is a designation of Gulf of America. So, any websites, any information, everything needs to be converted to Gulf of America. These two bills, they're glitch items, they're cleanup still. The Affordable Housing, there's additional amendments to Live Local Act. I'll have more details with that. And then the Condominium Association Bill, that's something that, there was a lot of questions with the milestones, the structural integrity reserve studies, pooling of, you know, the reserves. So, it clarifies a lot of the questions that came up from the condominium associations of what can and cannot be done. And I think it's just a matter of, you know, you learn as you go. Utilities, this was a big one. This, I will say, FAC was very involved. They fought very hard for this utility relocation. This was something that the communication providers, service providers, they want the municipalities to cover moving the utility from right-of-ways and to cover all the costs. So, there was a huge pushback, it was a big initiative. So, they have set up a grant program that will be funded with the CST through the Department of Commerce. And hopefully, the grant program every year will, for the most part, cover the relocation costs. It's still yet to be seen what the impact will be for the local municipalities. Again, construction regulations, this was, I kind of highlighted the bills that are covering big changes this year, or, sorry, like groupings, if you will. This one's one that came up in question, the Certified Recovery Residences. There was a push to really preempt everything to the state. Senator Pasodomo was instrumental in the Rules Committee to really allow the municipalities to develop their own ordinance and to really see what works within the communities instead of it, you know, kind of being decided at the state level and sent down. So, that legislation changed dramatically from when it first started. Transportation, this was another one that they were trying to have every culvert inspected yearly and cleaned before the hurricane season. One of the things of interest in this one as well is there is Florida statute now for a person may not operate a motor vehicle, vessel, or any other conveyance at a speed that creates an excessive wake on flooded or inundated streets or highways. So, that is new for the transportation bill this year. Emergency Preparedness and Response, this was, there was a lot of really big emergency response bills this came out of, you know, the legislators from like the Tampa area, St. Pete, that were impacted last year. So, this was something that everybody seemed to be able to live with. Some egg bills. And then, these are the ones I know are always of interest every year. So, sovereign immunity did not make it over the finish line again this year. Term limits for county commissioners, that did not pass. They could not reach consensus. The local option tax, TDT, that was debated heavily, amended heavily. That did not make it across the finish line. They were also looking to terminate the CRAs. That died in the Senate. There was also a bill to require local governments to allow for accessory dwelling units. That ended up dying in the House. And Handsfree, Michelle's not here, but she was instrumental. Last year, it passed the House but not the Senate. This year, it was reversed. It passed the Senate and not the House. Michelle was in Tallahassee repeatedly testifying. They also had legis, or they had language that was put into a driver safety, like a teenage driver safety course. That language was amended out. The House amended that, the Senate would not concur. So, the Handsfree would just couldn't get it over the finish line. And there was, like I said, it went through the Senate without issue. The senator, who actually would not let it be heard in committee last year, he was the one that added language this year to another bill, just trying to get it through. So, after hearing some of the testimony and talking to the parents, he really changed his mind. So, this was Representative Ben Arroch's initiative. She had, this did not go through. And just to circle back real quick to, Representative Ben Arroch is on the committee exploring the property taxes. Chris Johnson has met with her, or her staff, he's provided a lot of information. We tried to get in upfront to say, you know, how can we be a resource? How can we also let you know what the impact would be to local governments? So, you know, Chris and John Mullins, we've all been meeting with staff and talking to staff and trying to be helpful and provide information to get our information in. So, real quick with DC, funding update. Just had good meetings in Washington last week. So, we have resubmitted two of the earmark requests from last year, the nine million for the Veterans Community Center and the two million for the I-75 Everglades Boulevard Interchange Study. We also met with Department of Transportation when we were there. So, those two bills, we expect within the next three weeks that will be heard in Appropriations Committee. Then, towards the end of the year, hopefully, because, let me back up for a second. They were killed in the continuing resolution that was passed. So, all the appropriation requests from last year that were approved were killed in the continuing resolution, which is why we had to resubmit this year. So, same request, no changes to it. But we anticipate, like I said, next three weeks or so, it making its way through committee and then going on to be part of, hopefully, a good budget package that we'll be able to work with. Best-case scenario for approval, we would be able to start drawing the funds down, you know, January, maybe early spring, but that's kind of the timeline that we would be looking for for that. The bill's a potential impact. That's a report that I always do after session is over. So, once the governor receives all the bills, I do a report and just let you know what has passed, what the impact to the county will be. And I want to thank our partners. Obviously, Lisa's been instrumental in the state. Becker has been great. You know, I've been doing this twenty-five years, and normally with government, you know, this is how we've always done it. This year, the state and Fed, nothing is what we've always done it before. So, it's been unique years. You know, we started at the state with three special sessions, a snow week in Tallahassee, you know. So, it's been, it's been interesting, but, you know, definitely keep you updated on any developments.
Well, Richard, you did a great job of keeping everything organized, getting all the meetings set up. I know that's not easy with Congress. It's difficult enough at the state level, but with Congress, it's much more difficult. But you were able to get meetings with everybody we needed to meet with. I will tell you, the folks at the Department of Transportation were very disappointed that Commissioner McDaniel was not there.
Just bet.
They all remembered you from the year before. Commissioner McDaniel has been leading the charge to deal with the interchange at Everglades Boulevard and I-75. And we've made a lot of progress with your assistance there, Commissioner McDaniel. And that project will, that study will continue, and that, I think eventually, that interchange will be opened up. So, just want to let you know, Commissioner McDaniel, that...
Thank you, sir.
Your efforts are not going by the wayside here. The other interesting meeting that we had, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Castro...
No, no, that's...
We had a meeting with the Department of Veterans Affairs. And the interesting thing about the Department of Veterans Affairs is traditionally, they will not meet with local governments. They had told us in the years past that they would not meet with us. But with your efforts and John Mullins' efforts and with the efforts of our partners in Tallahassee, the Federal Department of Veterans Affairs did meet with us. We had some very high-level meetings, and we learned a couple of things. Number one, that the Federal Department of Veterans Affairs, because they're operating under the continuing resolution from two thousand twenty-four, that budget, the agency has a significant amount of money for their nursing home projects. It looks like Collier County is the only nursing home that is under consideration for funding. If that is the case, then we're fairly certain we're going to get the nod. We are ranked, we're one-point-three ranking, and I think you may, you may need to help me a little bit explain that. But ahead of, at one-point-one, you have nursing homes in states where they don't have a nursing home. There's nobody that fit that category. Then you had Indian reservations, nobody fit that category. And so, we're number one on the list for new nursing homes. And we questioned the Department of Veterans Affairs staff as to, could that list change? Does the Secretary Doug Collins, typically, would the secretary change that list? And the answer was no. Now, there could be some politics that applies to that, but we should be safe. Mr. Mullins, I don't know if you want to add a little bit to that in terms of clarification?
Sure, John Mullins...
Sure. John Mullins, your Director of Communications, Government and Public Affairs. And the commissioner is correct. The FY24 levels that the VA is operating on now in this fiscal year provides about $160 million worth of funding for the construction, construction grant program. So yes, they have quite a bit of funds compared to their typical allocation that they get from Congress. The interesting thing is 1.1, which is Priority Group 1, Sub-Priority 1, are remedies of existing facilities' life safety issues. And that usually runs between 11 and 20 million dollars a year. And to the commissioner's point, there is no one in 1.2, which is states or tribes that have previously not accepted or been offered a grant from the construction grant program. So the next category is 1.3, which is new facility construction. Collier County is the only facility in that category. So if you just take the 20 million, let's say, off the top of the $160 million allocation that the construction grant program has, there should be around $140 million left by the time they get to 1.3. We're looking for $74 million out of that pot. So I think we are in very good standing. And to the other point on the appeal, there is an appeal process, and we did question that. There has never been a successful appeal in the history of the construction grant program.
So we're, we're pretty confident that sometime during the third or fourth quarter of this year, we'll get the official notification. Assuming that we get that notification, with the money that the federal, the Florida Department of Veterans Affairs has on deposit for our project, actual construction can begin. They're already doing the, all of the design work. So we, we may have a groundbreaking sometime early next year, possibly. That's all I had to add to it. Commissioner Castro, you're
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to sort of piggyback on your thanks. Bridget, you know, thank you so much for hunching us again in DC. You know, we all went up there and it was a very valuable trip. Like Commissioner Saunders was saying, a lot of times, these big departments don't want to meet with locals. They're like commissioners. And I've, I've burned a lot of shoe leather in DC in a previous life. And I know you just don't make three phone calls and you get us in to see, you know, both of our senators, our two congressmen. We went into some big departments. We ended up in the White House, you know, talking to a senior staff member there. And a lot of times, in your particular field of work, they'll call you lobbyists. But I always say, when somebody's much more, a much more effective person in that job, they're liaisons, not lobbyists. And it's so obvious that all the people we met had such a tight relationship with you and your team. And I know that, you know, you and John are here representing more people that followed, that we followed around in DC. But much like last year and the times we've gone to Tallahassee, it's, it's always very impressive how, even while we're on the run, how hard you guys are working the phones, you know. We're seeing Congressman Donalds. We're not. We are. We are. We are. You know, you could just say, it's not going to happen. But you guys are really fighting to get us in the door. And then, I think we were all impressed at the amount of time that, that all of the senior elected officials, you know, we weren't able to see Senator Moody, but she's pretty new in the seat, but to get her entire staff, you know, to sit down with us. I was telling Commissioner McDaniel, I was so impressed with Congressman Diaz-Balart. We all were at his level of detail, how much time he spent with us. But that's all you guys setting it up. So, you know, thanks again for a very worthwhile trip. I don't think we could have heard anything more positive on the veterans' nursing home. I mean, if we don't get it, nobody will. And we're already slated to get it. It's just this last 74 million being released. And then, you know, then, like you said, down the road, we can put some shovels in the ground. And even though it's going to kill me to throw out a little bit of thanks to Commissioner Saunders, I will. Just kidding. Really, on behalf of all of us, you know, one thing you want to do when you go to DC is you want to have a cohesive pitch. You don't have three hours in the office. And, you know, we all know that. So, you know, we're not there to talk over each other and just sit there and ramble. So, you know, as the chairman, he was our talking head. I just want to say, on behalf of all of us, he had it down. And by the third meeting, he had it down. Like, it was like, we knew verbatim what words he was going to say. But, you know, Commissioner Saunders, you really represented us well in DC by taking the lead on the projects and outlining things for all the people that we met with and in the departments. And I really think that's important. There's no question, everybody we met with in the departments and the elected officials, there's no question that their takeaway was how tight and cohesive and bonded and proactive we are in Collier County and how in tuned we are, you know, to the issues. I know everybody had a real positive takeaway. And that took the efforts of everybody. And, you know, Commissioner Saunders did a great job leading our group and our, and our pitch. And, you know, we thank you for all you did to make sure that our time there was valuable. And, and it definitely was. So thank you.
And just one more thing to add as well. At the airport, I was able to connect Commissioner Hall for a meeting with
Of course you were. While he was carrying his luggage, right?
So I was able to connect it, that he was able to meet with, with the senator the following morning. And she has legislation for 404 permits. And Senator Scott has co-sponsored the legislation.
Oh, great.
So, yeah, so that's a great update that, you know, we weren't sure if we're going to be able to, to make it happen. And it did. So that was a great meeting that we're able to put together last minute. So very pleased with that.
Well, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody registered to speak on that issue at all? All right. And we'll, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioners, before we move on to our next item, if I could turn your attention to the back of the room for the Artist of the Month. The Artist of the Month for May are various local photographers, including Phil Allman, Max Frund, Lee Martin, and our very own staff member, Angel Kelly. These photos were taken at various natural areas throughout Collier County.
Very nice.
Very cool.
That does bring us to item seven, public comments. Tom?
We have no registered speaker today.
All right. Very good. Commissioners, that moves us to item 11. And if you would like, we do, we'd have two items on, on item 11. We have the add-on item, which may be the one we want to take first, since we do have Mr. Ivanovich and his, and his folks here. And then we can take item 11A, which is a staff item.
And as staff is approaching the podium, I've spent quite a bit of time talking to our staff. And they've come to a conclusion that because of the circumstances, what's presented to us in terms of a modified penalty or fee is not reasonable. That under the circumstances, a number that reflects the real cost to the county would be appropriate under the circumstance. So I would ask our staff to kind of get, get into not what's presented here, but what your conclusion was, so we can conclude this fairly quickly and move on.
If I may, let me read the item title in. This is our add-on, item 11C. This is a recommendation to approve the release of a code enforcement lien with accrued value of $301,800 for reduced payment of $242,711.60 in the code enforcement actions titled Board of County Commissioners versus Oaks Farms, Inc., relating to the property located at 4176 Mercantile Avenue, Collier County, Florida. Ms. Jamie Cook, your Director of Development and Review, is here to present.
And I'll preface this also by two other comments. Our staff to make sure that whatever fee is assessed, that it's what would normally be assessed, assessed under all these circumstances. And that's what staff has come up with. And I've discussed this with Mr. Ivanovich, and they're in agreement, from what I understand, to what we've proposed. So.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jamie Cook, your Director of Development Review. I've basically been involved with this code case since the beginning. So that's why I'm, I'm here to talk about it with you, if you have questions about the history. As Commissioner Saunders said, the recommendation within the executive summary is what staff is allowed to recommend based on the board policy. So it is consistent with that policy, which allows for a 10% reduction of the lien based on the appraised value of the property. However, this is a, has been a very unique case that staff has been involved in. The property owner did attempt to come into compliance by requesting both to amend the site development plan and to vacate the conservation easement. Therefore, what the property owner is requesting is what would be required of any other property owner that clears without first obtaining a permit, which is double the application fee for the application. An SDPA application fee is $2,500. So he is requesting that his total amount be $5,000, two times the site development plan amendment application fee. Since he has already paid the first $2,500, the balance would be a remaining $2,500. As I mentioned before, this is a very unique code enforcement case, with it being one out of two out of 1,795 industrial zone parcels throughout the county that was required to have a conservation easement when it was originally developed. So staff does support the owner's request to pay that double, the after-the-fact double the application fee. As Commissioner Saunders said, Mr. Ivanovich is here on behalf of the property owner. And him or I are available to take any questions you may have.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Yeah, I just want to know if we can get the extra money from the contractor that did the work improperly.
I'm in, I'm in complete agreement with, with staff's recommendation and what the applicant has proposed.
Commissioner Castro.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to add, you know, so we all met with you. We all met with Mr. Ivanovich. So I think we sort of all understand this. But sometimes when things get passed here quickly and, you know, citizens maybe read something on Facebook, you know, in an hour about what we're probably are about to decide and don't understand all the moving parts. I think we all got the, the understanding from county staff that it doesn't matter who the applicant was. This is a unique case, and we're trying to do what's fair. So it doesn't matter where they live, who they are, what their name is, or anything like that. You know, I was one of the commissioners that led a resolution to really tighten up, you know, fines and liens and things like that. But, but like you said, this is a very, very unique case. And a lot of things, a lot of times, the amount of dollars builds up just automatically while it's trying to be worked out. I will tell you, if I was, I concur as well. If I wasn't satisfied, having met with you and Mr. Ivanovich, then I would say it, you know, I'm here right now. And, you know, any dollars that we collect goes back to the taxpayers. But we're all about being fair and equitable, no matter who you are. And this has, this has nothing to do with, you know, whoever it is. It has to do everything with the case. And I appreciate all the time that you spent with, with me. And it sounds like with all of us outlining all the details and separating rumor from fact. So, you know, I support the staff's, you know, recommendation. But I also think that prior to coming to this vote, our staff was doing what they're, they're supposed to do as well. And so I don't think anything was done incorrectly here when it was the 10% reduction in payment. They're, they're going with our guidance, but they're just doing it in a more generic way. You guys did a deeper dive. And we all realize this is a very unique case that we want to make sure is, is done correctly and fairly, no matter who the, who the person is.
Mr. Ivanovich, you want to confirm? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Cobell can say that you were there.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to, because I know a lot of people out here, and I agree with my other fellow commissioners up here, you know, had a long, deep dive in this, speaking to staff. And of course, Representative, you know, this is something that, I just want to put it out there, that maybe people may not know, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this was something that the government realized at some point, this was futile to have this particular set aside on these properties. So it doesn't even exist anymore, anymore, right? In, in the process. If you were to do this today, you wouldn't be required to do what we're talking about.
Absolutely, Commissioner. When the property was first developed by a previous property owner in 2005, it was required. The board removed this requirement on industrial zone parcels about six years later. So if he had come in after 2011, he would not have been required to do this at all.
Yeah. And I just want, I just want the people out there to understand that this is very unique in a situation we're exposed with today. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And just, just for the record, first, I want, I want to thank the two Jamies, Jamie French and Jamie Cook and Tom with Code Enforcement, to discuss this process and come up with what I think is the right, the right fine, if you will, for doing work without the permit. So yes, we're, we're fine with, with the double of the, of the fee, which would have been another $2,500. We'll pay it immediately. If we could get that resolution signed, because as you know, there's a closing, so we got to get that recorded in order to clear that up on the title before the closing. So if there's a way to get the, the resolution signed, so we can record the, the
The resolution you're talking about, is that a resolution of the, of the county commission?
Yeah. I believe you're going to, there's going to be some document that you, you will sign that will
Do we have a copy of what is proposed for us to approve?
We typically don't use a document. I mean, the board gives directions to staff to take the 5,000, and that's the end of it.
But we, there's, there's a record, just so you know, there's a recorded lien already.
And, and I'll process that as quickly as it comes in.
Okay. All right.
So we need a motion, we need a motion to accept the additional dollar amount of $2,500, which reflects double the after-the-fact permit fee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second. All the favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passed unanimously.
I mean, county attorney, just from my own knowledge, I think what you're saying is, it doesn't require a resolution, but there is paperwork.
Yes, sir.
Right? Yeah.
Whip up a release. They'll need a release of a lien.
All right. Why don't we take a break for our reporter? We'll come back at 20 minutes Thank you, Ms. Patterson. We'll go ahead and conclude our meeting.
Yes, sir. That brings us to item 11A. Item 11A is a recommendation to award invitation to bid number 25-8327 Vanderbilt Beach Road at Logan Boulevard Intersection Improvements to Quality Enterprises USA, Inc. in the amount of $6,500,000, a proven owner's allowance of $400,000, and authorize a chairman to sign the attached agreement, project number 60252. Mr. Jay Ahmad, your Director of Transportation Engineering and Construction Management, is here to present or answer questions.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Jay Ahmad, your Transportation Engineering Director. I do have a presentation. I'd be happy to present, or I can answer any questions that you may have.
Just brief, just for
Just a, if you could, just a brief.
So this is a, this is an intersection improvement project that's located on Vanderbilt Beach Road and Logan Boulevard. And this is kind of the location map, the existing conditions, as you see on, on the display there. East-west is Vanderbilt Beach Road and Logan north-south. Logan, of course, is one of the few arterials that goes from Rattlesnake Hammock with Santa Barbara the name, and continues and changes its name to Logan north of Pine Ridge Road, and goes all the way to Benira Springs Road. So this intersection is one of the more important intersections in the county, as it connects all these north-south through the county. So the project, basically, it's an upgrade of the existing traffic signal. We have span wire traffic signals, you know, those robes across the road. And we have a program through the years of updating all these span wire signal configurations to mass arms. So that's one of the main purposes of, of this project. We call it hardening. During hurricanes, frankly, none of the span wires last. They're all over the, you know, sometimes you can't even find the signal indications. They, they, they go somewhere. So this project will construct mass arms for all indications at the intersection. While we're doing this, we, we have done few roadway improvements. We, we made what we call free rides, those islands in, in the roadway that would allow the right turners to continue either in a yield condition or an acceleration-type conditions. We also added, converted the left turn lane on westbound on Vanderbilt Beach Road. It's now shadowed. And the next one kind of shows what, what I'm talking about. If you look westbound going, you know, from right to, to left, we were, currently, we have one left lane, and it'll be two left lanes. And as I mentioned, you could see the, the islands that I'm talking about, these islands, that's where our mass arms are going to go. But it also provides a free movement in all directions, which speeds up traffic and increased capacity. As you know, we have Vanderbilt Beach Road extension that's going to open up and bring some traffic this way. So we're also kind of preparing for that movement to increase all our capacity. We just updated the signal system on Vanderbilt Beach Road. This is kind of one of the more things that we're doing to, to move traffic forward. That's it. So that's, that's the, the project. We, we are here to award the contract. We went out to bid, and we got a low bidder, Quality Enterprises. And we hope that you approve this, this item.
All right. Commissioner McDaniel.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval, but ask Jay a question on a different subject matter, if I may.
All right. Do you want us to take a vote before we?
Yeah, well, that'd be fine, because it's a subject matter. It's off-subject.
Anyone registered to speak?
No, sir.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second to approve the, the award. All the favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That passed unanimously. Commissioner McDaniel?
Yes. I, I, I got a brief bit of news that we, we reverted back to traffic signal control in a different methodology. in a different methodology. Is that correct?
What you may be referring to on this is, we're using AI essentially to, to move traffic. And we're experimenting in few places. We have it on Airport Road. We call it, essentially synchronization of the traffic signals. If you go north on Airport Road or south, you hope to hit all these lights green. And, and this system essentially looks at, we have cameras on all directions, and it, it looks at the volumes and calculates the splits which movement deserves to get green time. So if there are no traffic on the side streets, it reverts back to the main line. And that's, I believe, what you're referring to.
I'm not sure what I'm referring to. I just have had several comments, and myself, not, we, we worked pretty hard last year to concentrate on the plume movement of, of the, of the main traffic on our main arteries. And I, I felt that that was a great enhancement to our overall traffic flow. And I, with, with this new addition, I'm, I'm seeing gluts. Even this morning, I, I saw gluts of traffic that were stopped because of side lights that were not synchronized with the main light. So, no, no further questions, sir.
Yeah, please let us know. We have our numbers, 25205,000 on every traffic controller at the intersection. And if you see something, our TMC, which directly, it answers, not by, it answers by one of our technicians, will look at it. And we have eyes on the intersection that we can hopefully address a condition like that. But the goal is to move traffic.
Okay, good. All right. Any other questions? Then we'll, we'll move on.
Commissioners, that brings us to Item 15. Staff and Commission General Communications, actually, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. 15A is public comments on general topics, not on the current or future agenda by individuals not already heard during previous public comments in this meeting.
We have no registered speakers.
Very good. 15B is staff project updates. I have two items here for you. First is, we have been working with the state DOGE team. I will give an update at the next meeting. I'd planned to do it today, but with Commissioner Hall not here, and his interest in, in the DOGE process, we'll, we'll go ahead and provide that at the next meeting. The second is that we are, have had a good meeting with the folks from the Military Museum about their move to campus. That was discussed at the last meeting. We are targeting a date of September 1st for them to move in, giving us time to address our summer programming over at the museum, as well as the Military Museum, to get organized for the move. You may hear some concerns, and so for the, the listening and viewing public, this does not mean that we will not have space for lectures. We will make space on campus for those types of activities to continue on, as well as traveling exhibits. So we are looking at all of our available government space for places where we can put the traveling exhibits. We have spaces in libraries, as well as here on campus, where we'll be able to attract visitors, which we think will, will be really good, especially some of the library spaces. And also with the partnership with the Military Museum here on campus, hoping to draw different visitors in, or the same visitors that, that know about the museum and ones that don't, to view not only our campus museum, but also the Military Museum. So we're looking forward to this, and wanted to give you all that update. And that brings us then to Item 15C. Staff and Commission General Communications. Just a reminder that we do have our workshop. It's on all of your calendars for June 3rd. That is the Strategic Plan for Mental Health, as well as the AUIR. And with that, county attorney.
Nothing. Thank you.
Commissioners.
Commissioner Caldwell, anything?
Uh, no, nothing.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Yeah, just, just one brief. I, I just want to make an announcement. We're, we're making some progress with the Regional Planning Council. Two of the counties, I have got meetings set up where I am actually going to go to their boards and have a discussion about the inter-local agreement and the MOU. And, 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 and we, at the last RPC meeting, received the resignation of the current Executive Director. Her last day is May 15th. So we may need a little assistance. We volunteered our staff to assist with grant oversight, and so on and so forth. So far, our staffing needs at the RPC are okay. I just wanted to give you an update, and we're, we're continuing on.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Castro.
Nothing, sir.
All right. I, I just have a couple of things. I think our next meeting will be a little longer than this one. So, just letting you know, so you can bring us some roundings. Also, Mr. Mullins, I know we, we discussed the summer schedule in terms of work here in this room. Can you kind of revisit that, let us know what, what the status is in terms of the potential for not having a meeting?
Yes, sir. John Mullins, your Director of Communications, Government and Public Affairs. And we are still on track with the contractor to be here during the week of the second meeting in July. So that meeting will still have to be canceled. Depending upon the progress that they make or do not make, depending upon things that they encounter, you had previously said, we may have a little bit of flexibility with the first meeting date in August, should it be necessary. We hope to have that ascertained before the end of July, to make sure everybody has plenty of time for preparation in that regard. But we're optimistic that we can get things done on time.
Okay. So we will not have the second meeting in July?
Correct.
We're somewhat up in the air as to the first meeting in August, but most likely, that's not going to be a problem.
Correct.
All right.
But we'll let everybody know by the end of July if the contractors have run into any issues that may slow them down.
Okay. I don't have anything to add.
Just a reminder, for that second meeting in July, we will have an absentia meeting. So all of our, our regular work, consent agenda type of work, will continue to go forward, and will be ratified by the board upon their, their return.
Right. Okay. If there's nothing else, we are, oop.
Oh, no.
If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.